Yeah, you don't know whether it's councillor or deputy, but other than that.
Oh shit.
I'm gonna pull your chair for you. Stay right there.
Okay, it's three forty-five. I'd like to call order of committee of whole for November the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. First of all, if I get approval of the agenda, councillor Crowell, seconded by councillor De Andretti, all in favor? All right, so we're gonna move to three and three point one, and I'm assuming we have Paul Fripp from BDO Canada zooming in. There he is.
Yes, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Well, anytime you're ready.
Perfect. So the purpose of this meeting is to go over our audit planning letter, which has been provided to council, as I understand, in advance of this meeting. And really to establish two-way communication between the auditor, myself and BDO Canada and the Town of Gibsons. So I'm just gonna run through this document really quickly, and then we can pause after that and see if there's any questions. So this, this, our, our plan for the audit is substantially the same as in prior years. We wouldn't expect there to be any real significant changes from any year-to-year unless there's changes in accounting or auditing standards. There are neither impacting the Town of Gibsons for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, so it's good news. Just gonna run through, you can see, here's your key members of your BDO audit team, myself. And joining me on the call today is Jennifer Barkman. She'll be the manager who's overseeing the staff who are executing the audit. Our contact information's here for your reference. If anything does come up at any time, really, feel free to reach out to either one of us, or you can reach out to us through management. We do conduct our audit through management with the support of management. The timeline for the audit is that we do start right around now. In fact, this week, we're getting started on our interim planning procedures. We present this planning document to council, and then we come back in March to conduct our year-end audit field work with goal of completing our audit in early April. We present our results to management, and then we circle back to council in late April with goal of approving the financial statements, or I should say council approving the financial statements in, in late April or early May, so that they can be filed with the province by May fifteenth. Our responsibilities with regards to the financial statements are unchanged. Those are outlined in our audit engagement letter, which the scope of, of the audit and our approach, as I mentioned, is substantially the same as in prior years. We, as part of a financial statement audit, we are required to consider fraud to the extent that it could cause a misstatement or error within the financial statement. So it's not a forensic audit by any means, but we are required to understand the internal controls and processes and IT environment sufficient enough to be able to identify if there are any gaps that exist that could give rise to a possibility for fraud and design procedures that would address those risks. Some of those procedures are outlined here. Again, no change in our approach here from prior years, and as well, we've already had a brief discussion with management in advance of this meeting, and we are not currently aware of any instances of actual suspected or alleged fraud impacting the town. That being said, if anybody is aware of anything, then I'd ask that you make myself aware of that or through management, and should anything arise throughout the audit process, we will circle back with council if, if that were ever to arise as needed, or we'll report back in the case of, you know, smaller, non-substantive issues like, say, fraudulent credit card or bank transaction that may just get raised with management and then reported back to council in our final results meeting. Our significant audit risks, now I should define the language here a little bit. As part of Canadian auditing standards, we have to assess risk of material misstatement within the financial statement. So that's the risk that there could be an error in the financial statements arising from complexity of accounting standards or judgment that's applied to the financial statements, or gaps in internal controls, for instance. So we have a pretty strong understanding of the town's systems based on our past experience auditing the town, and then we raise risks accordingly. Some of these risks are mandatory in accordance with Canadian auditing standards, those first two, and some are circumstantial, depending on issues that we've identified throughout our audit testing. The first one's management override of internal controls, and this is, as I mentioned, a mandatory audit consideration, and that, that basically is acknowledging that management in their position can perpetrate fraud by directly or indirectly manipulating records or overriding internal controls. So we design procedures generally looking at unusual transactions, transactions that follow non-routine processes, transactions that require judgment or estimation. We're looking at those specifically to see if there's any indication of bias. We're also looking to ensure that those transactions have a sound business rationale attached to them based on our understanding of the town's operations. The second is the risk of error arising from revenue recognition. This is also a mandatory audit consideration under Canadian auditing standards, and this acknowledges that revenue recognition standards are complex and open to interpretation. Specifically, under Canadian public sector accounting standards, we are, are more focused in on government transfers. So those are those funds, grant funds, coming from other governments to the town, and there are, the, the, the technical requirements here are very open to interpretation, and so can achieve some very different results in financial statements depending on what lens you might put on. So our testing in this area is generally looking directly at the agreements. Specifically, we're looking for stipulations within those agreements that would give rise to a liability, and it's that, that will determine whether funding can be recognized as revenue or not, where stipulations that give rise to a liability exists, then we're looking at how the government has extinguished those stipulations to recognize revenue. So that may be spending the funds, but not always. Sometimes it's a requirement to complete an asset in whole. So you can end up in, with different results depending on the language of the agreement. The last item on this page is segregation of duties. The Town of Gibsons is a smaller organization. There's limited number of individuals within the finance department, and so as a result, nat, there's just naturally going to be circumstances where full segregation of duties can't be achieved, and so we acknowledge this risk, and we specifically look for any circumstances where potentially overriding of internal controls has arisen because of this lack of segregation of duties. Our focus here is more on the IT systems themselves and how they're set up, so looking for administrative privileges and what rights those administrative privileges provide to those users with financial reporting responsibilities and how that can impact the control environment. Another area, but not a significant risk, is really just acknowledging staff salaries and the work that we do during the audit with regards to staff salaries, given that is such a significant figure, significant expenditure for the Town of Gibsons and local government in general, and it spans across all departments as well. And so we are conducting some detailed analytics around payroll expenses against budget, against prior year, against benefits, and also looking at a sample of payroll employment agreements in the payroll register to ensure that the underlying data upon which we're conducting those analytics are at, is accurate. Materiality is the concept by which we provide our audit opinion, and the strict definition is, is that misstatements considered to be material. So a misstatement could be an error or a difference in the financial statements, considered to be material if it could be reasonably be expected to influence the decision, decisions of users based on the financial statements. So what we do is throughout the course of our audit, we're tracking any differences that we identify, and we're accumulating those. We're assessing at the end of the audit whether those differences exceed materiality. If it does, then we would encourage management to record any differences identified, and, and if it can't be resolved, then ultimately our options are to modify the audit opinion. That only happens in rare circumstances, and you'll see that the audit opinion that's been issued for the Town of Gibsons over the last number of years has been an unqualified audit opinion, and rarely would we expect to get up close to the materiality threshold that's been set here for the town for the current year's financial statement audit, which has been set at five hundred thousand dollars. And that threshold is determined based on three percent of revenues right now, because we don't have current year figures for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. We set that based on prior figures, and we will update that materiality threshold once we have December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five financial results. And the rest of this is just for information purposes. Our engagement letter is also attached to this. I'm gonna stop there. That takes us through the materials that I had prepared to go through today and see if there are any questions for myself with regards to our audit process.
Thank you, Paul. Very concise report there and letter. I'm gonna ask council if they have any questions for BDO. Nothing on the left, nothing on the right. I have a question. M A I S. What is that? Like in the segregation of duties, that was, I just, yeah.
That sets the financial reporting system in place at, at the Town of Gibsons. So that's, that, that is the package through which all the transactions are processed and ultimately result in how the financial statements are prepared at the end of the year. So we're, we very keenly focused on how M A I S is set up to see how users with financial reporting duties are set up within that system to be able to process journal entries, approve invoices, all that sort of stuff. Then we also look at the online banking systems to see how users are set up there. And I, I recognize you didn't ask this question, but just the reason why we care, and I think this is the important part, is someone with administrative privileges within a system where there is a requirement for dual authorization, if somebody has administrative privileges and has financial reporting responsibilities, then they can effectively circumvent that dual authorization control by setting up other users or by leveraging existing users to obtain that second dual authorization at both the financial reporting level as well as at the banking level.
Thank you. Director of Finance, do you have anything to add? Numbers? Yeah, you like that, eh? Pretty giddy over there. Okay. Thank you, Paul, and thank you, Jennifer. Awesome. We'll be seeing and hearing from you in the future, I'm sure.
Yeah, I look forward to reporting back in April when we've completed our audit.
Awesome. Okay.
Take care.
Thank you so much.
I know.
Okay, I guess we'll move on to four reports, and for this one, the Director of Infrastructure Services and the Drainage Utility Feasibility Study Two, Cost Recovery Options. Please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just very briefly, I'll introduce the report and the consultant from Urban Systems that we have with us, Aaron Lee. He can come to the delegation table. So this is building on the work that we presented to council in February of two thousand twenty-five, where we had presented some analysis of the feasibility of developing an alternative funding source for the drainage utility or Drainage Works in town, which is currently reliant entirely on general taxation with supplementing from capital funding. And so we're just trying to queue up the presentation. So phase two of the assessment, so phase one, we, we determined it's feasible. We presented to council with, council gave us support to move on with phase two. Phase two focused on assessing the costs and options for cost recovery. So I'll let Aaron kind of get into all the detail of how and, and what we found, and then I can speak at the end of his presentation on what we're recommending, provide a little bit of rationale, and then we'll look for questions and comments from council. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thanks very much for having us. To the Chair, it's very nice to have the opportunity to be with you. Again, thanks for the invitation, and Trevor, thanks for the, for the opening. We have about ten slides to walk through in hopes that there's a bit of a, a quick start, a little bit more meatiness in the middle, and then get towards the discussion about options and recommendation towards the end. Our discussion today centers on dedicated stormwater funding model for, for Gibsons and looking into a more sustainable view of funding drainage, drainage services. The, this slide here is really where we get into discussing the purpose of phase two. Our work to date follows a fairly well-known model. Phase one was really zeroing in on the why and looking at the rationale and the belief and the approach to creating dedicated stormwater service funding. And phase two is really more about the how, how to take that rationale, that core belief, and turning it into options and narrowing those options from a feasibility and applicability to Gibson's approach. How to fund drainage in a dedicated way includes a few key parts. One is to outline costs, and in our documentation and in the discussion today, we talk a little bit about capital and then operations and maintenance type costs related to drainage services. Those costs and those two cast, cost categories helps set the stage for cost recovery. The second part that we look at when we do this work is to look at options elsewhere, and there are tens of municipalities in B C, I think the number is closer towards twenty-five at the moment, who have dedicated funding models like this. There are a range of options, and part of the phase one work was to sort of narrow and screen out some of the options that didn't have good applicability to Gibson's. And really in phase two, it was about looking for that alignment with your sewer and water utilities and their approach to cost recovery, and finding a way to match both the wisdom that comes from the industry for cost recovery, and then aligning that with the utility cost recovery framework you already have with the sewer and water. So our work in phase two covers these important topics and begins to build them out in a little more detail. Thanks for show. While simple and true, that phrase, costs beget cost recovery, it's helpful to see all the parts of the service laid out on the table. Not only does that help at this table, it helps in conversations and working sessions with staff, but ultimately it, it becomes quite helpful in discussions with the public at future dates. We think that being able to unpack costs helps create understanding. Just daylighting them allows for a more understood and reasonable conversation about why to approach a new funding model, and it shows some of the natural links, especially with stormwater and drainage, to the two other utilities in place around water and sewer. So building this dedicated path, and Director of Infrastructure already alluded to it, but within property taxes and general revenue, stormwater can often be outcompeted to other priorities on an annual basis. So being able to not only set it aside for a different funding source, but one that is more custom to the type of costs that it has, really does set it up for long-term success and for the future. So we wanted to do this work in phase two in this analysis with a, a key understanding of what are the costs and the components of service in stormwater, and then right beside them, also thinking about the sewer and water utility framework and alignment. So the work to date includes making costs visible and accountable, really breaking those down, looking at what are the options and the preferred options for building stable and balanced revenue here. Again, really trying to support that long-term sustainability with that appreciation and alignment with water and sewer. In doing this work, we hope and expect a deeper appreciation for the parts that make up stormwater services. This includes the public, property owners, businesses, and this slide is really just trying to bring some elimination to what those key parts are. Any sound funding model allows the town to take care of core services, for sure, to complete select special initiatives, which are a little more occasional, to deliver on goals that already show up in important plans and policies like O C Ps or integrated stormwater management plans, Source to Sea, for example, and then obviously to prepare for the future. So when we start to think about sort of what's in the basket of funding this service, we think about the stormwater system itself, and this council has been certainly quite vocal on natural assets and asset management, and so this mix of engineered and natural assets, the kilometers of pipe, the manholes, the catch basins, key creeks and ponds, that stormwater system itself is here, it's real, it's tangible, and it's part of the core service. Obviously, there's capital and asset renewal. Historically, major upgrades have relied primarily on grants, not necessarily core stable funding that comes from within. So to meet I S and P coals and to maintain both built and natural assets, that's part of the basis for which this work was being undertaken, but a core need for the service is not just to recognize the assets are here, but to inevitably plan for not just their replacement, but also their improvement and adaptability over time as climate growth and other changes exist within the town. On the top right, we think quite earnestly about operations and maintenance, and a lot of the cost expenditures that are there are quite familiar to this council and show up in financial plans and budget documents. Part of the work was to take those, unpack them, put them into different categories, and make sure that we could find alignment with those in a year-one basis and begin to say, what would year-two look like and year-three? How do we begin to think about this, this service over a period of time? Those includes things, not major repairs per se, but flushing, the upkeep, the basic inspections, debris management out in the field, really ensuring that the, the works and services that are there, when it does rain, when there is risk of flooding, are able to deliver their service at full capacity. And no secret here, that climate and water quality presents some pressure for the service itself to continue to adapt, and that's part of the sustainability of looking at the service from a new funding model, is recognizing that it may have undue pressure compared to some other services of the town. So really being able to signal it out and give it that core funding allows for that adaptation over time, sometimes urgently, but hopefully incrementally as well. Next slide. So with line of sight on cost categories that we think helped lead to a more understandable basis for why this changed and how to go about setting up this change, we, we can go about the, the following, the slide that follows this, which is looking at some of those component parts. But before we get to that slide, I just wanted to mention that guiding principles become quite helpful in this work too, like most other policy and strategy work, but we, we use these principles, we use them initially in phase one because there are many options to have considered in the industry, lots of different ways that municipalities fund stormwater services, but they remain helpful while we go about getting closer towards the proposed fee model and making sure that the principles can be used to think about things like cost distribution between different property types, different areas of town, and different ways of makeup. So sufficiency, alignment, fairness and equitability, simplicity, adaptability, these principles were useful in phase one, and they remain quite useful now. Part of our work actually took the recommended two-part model and worked it through those principles to say, have we been able to deliver on what we intended to do at the start? And so those principles have been helpful to start and would be helpful in continuing forward to future phases. Next slide. I mentioned that it would get a little bit more meaty as we got through it, maybe not quite like an audit, but when I think about costs and cost recovery, there certainly are key components to being able to, to make some of this clear. So this slide kind of has three columns to it, and A and a B and a C, and in the far left here on operations and maintenance, what we're really describing here is the makeup of the, the expenditure forecast for stormwater drainage services, most of which in a year-one scenario is made up of operations and maintenance, and this is really the core of staffing, supervision, inspections, ditching and flushing, repairs, training, equipment and vehicles. This is making the system work on a regular basis. We say year-one because we're not exactly sure when the, the user fee gets put into place. Is it right away? Is it year one? Is it year two? The numbers are reflecting over the course of a one-to-two-year period, and this number of seven hundred thousand is slightly higher than previous financial plan estimates of around five hundred thousand, and there's sort of four reasons for that. The first is that it includes some element of inflation and escalation, because we don't know exactly what year the O N M would get funded, but more than that, there is some inclusion of things like monitoring of stormwater, both the quality and the quantity, so the flow rates themselves, adding some more monitoring systems, which would become a normal part of, of operations. Two is some anticipation of a VAC truck, which is a, a key piece of equipment that relates to service delivery, so being able to look at potential debt servicing from that. Three is more field and pipe inspections and data collection. When you get into natural asset management and asset management like you are now, but even advancing it further for stormwater, it becomes quite helpful to have a lot of field-based information. So instead of replacing something based on just the age alone, it's nice to have a picture. How good is it actually doing underground to, to see how urgent it might be? And the last one is some additional budgets for staff and professional support as you get into troubleshooting and really trying to meet levels of service and expectation that can come from a new funding model. In column B, when we look at the capital program, so we have operations and maintenance in one, and then capital in the other, we're, we're showing three different cost categories. Now, these are helpful for reporting and estimating, but it's very common to see overlap, that a project might have an element of renewal as well as climate adaptation, and sometimes it has an element of, you know, staff response or a connection to another project itself. So we, we report this way, but then when it comes down to budgeting and annual planning year over year, it becomes a little bit more cumbersome to say, each project must only do one of these things. It actually turns out that most projects do a little bit of all the above. As, as Trevor alluded, we're starting modestly here, that most of the capital for stormwater historically has been, yeah, maybe a deep pull from reserves, but most often has been grant-based. So the, the emphasis in the reporting is to start gradually, but to move forward over the course of several years towards a more locally funded, self-reliant model on being able to fund stormwater projects here. It doesn't mean that grants aren't part of the picture. It doesn't mean that borrowing or debt servicing isn't part of the picture. That just means when we think about being able to set up the utility for sustainability, that getting from current capital funding to a more reliable level of capital funding is part of the goal. Start small, incrementally get a little bit higher over time. And then see, the, the column on the right here is just sort of adding the two together to say, this gives us a bit of a revenue target, and you'll notice that this number here, sub one million, would be, you know, a, a moderate fraction, a moderate. a moderate fraction, a modest fraction of what the sewer and water utilities would be funded at today's basis. But that's just recognizing where we're at in the course of time and how the aim is to try to get to a more sustainable funding level over time. But you start at the start and you start at a year-one basis. Slide please. So what does it look like? So this is sort of the slide three of three around costs and cost recovery. It has two parts. The first is a stormwater parcel tax to fund capital. And the second part on the right is a stormwater user fee to cover some of those O and M. And if you remember from the previous slide, the the stormwater parcel tax on the capital side reflects a little over a quarter of the initial budget, but most of the funding for O and M of the utility would come from O and M. Now, this parcel tax basis does align well with water and sewer utilities. Each of those have one as a parcel tax already, as you're probably well aware. The approach here is that the the parcel tax rate is set equal and common to all parcels in the town. Part of the basis for including all of the properties here is that each of us travels around the municipality, has access to amenities and benefits from a working system that works on the whole. So we want to take an all-in approach on capital. The needs in this area are biggest among all of them. That's where some of the movement would be. So it starts modest, but the intent is for everyone to be in together on this parcel tax as it as it can grow over time to fund some of the capital needs here. On the user fee side, we have like a proposed or provisional user fee approach, a cost per lineal meter that's in the report. Some of the discussion is around being able to take some time to do some engagement to think this through a little bit further by being able to test out some various options. Nonetheless, it starts with a provisional model. And there is some precedent behind a user fee based on frontage lineal meters. Victoria has part of their component based on this approach. On a, it's kind of a sensibility basis. A lot of the costs for operations and maintenance appear linear and are conducted in a linear way. It allows for the property owner to have a physical signal for the cost of service. They can kind of look out their window, they can see the width, the frontage of their property, they can appreciate, and maybe they haven't before, that there is a pipe or a ditch. There are catch basins within the street that are servicing their property. It also can be a reminder of the vastness and the meter-by-meter work of a utility that stretches throughout the entire town of Gibson's. Part of the user fee basis is to sort of scale and suit the densities onsite, so you can distribute costs in a manner that allows for lower density to pay a certain rate and higher density to pay higher rates. And that's often justified, and it would be here too, the fact that larger, more dense properties usually come with busier, larger infrastructure in the roadway. And some of the rates that were included in the background report scale from a few dollars per meter on agriculture upwards to ten to fifteen dollars per meter, depending on some of the other land uses. Again, the emphasis on the the revenue generation on stormwater there, the user fee was 700,000 annually and 275,000 for the capital side. Thanks, Michelle. You're reading this scene quite well. Okay, so the the focus of phase two has been to to fund the cost of service, capital and O and M. That that really has been the center of what our work has been. But fee design has some related topics to consider. These are topics that have been considered so far and can be considered further, but certainly through engagement as well, especially for the proposed user fee side, the O and M side of the equation. I'm not going to go through all of them in in detail, and some of the report actually layers out several other beneath them. It's almost like seeing these as bigger buckets and then below each one of them is several other factors that relate to it. But in in some of the work and discussions with staff and and research elsewhere, we've looked at property stewardship, recognizing some potential rebates or discounts for onsite stormwater management techniques. Some of that can be explored cautiously. It's recognizing that you want to have something simple and repeatable and not a site-by-site negotiation because it can create administratively a very difficult situation. So it's good to have some signals that way, but always trying to balance the trade-off of of understanding and financial benefit as well as just the overall administrative effort to come with it. Accountability, we looked at equity and affordability is a much larger topic and certainly other factors that are part of the the user fee and the the parcel tax and can be part of the discussion when it comes to engagement in future stages as well. Looked at property differences, and the structure aims to smooth variation between urban and rural areas, between different classes of roads, recognizing that all properties benefit from shared drainage systems, but each property has its own sort of mark and connection to the system demand as well. So try to balance a little bit of both of those things in each, in the design itself. Property taxes and general revenue, obviously there's some crown and exempt properties. The benefit of shifting towards this is that it's a more inclusive model where you have all of the properties contributing towards the service rather than some of the exemptions today. And then obviously, one thing that I'll consider in future is just the importance of transitioning, transitioning well, good communication, very clear basis for doing so, so that various stakeholders and property owners can come along with the process. Next slide, please. I think the staff report lays out some of the options and the recommended path forward quite well. This slide is just honoring that there is some technical and some engagement steps to traverse through implementation, whatever direction council chooses to take. On the left-hand side, some of the internal technical work, really a collaborative cooperative method among engineering, utilities, finance. The the first one, the parcel tax harmonization, again, being able to align the parcel tax with stormwater, sorry, with water and sewer methods. That's not a significant exercise in terms of time, but it's an important one to get right. Make sure we have all the right properties included. Once you get to the user fee data refinement, the utility invoice prototyping and the bylaw development, a lot of that works quite iteratively on the right-hand side with the results of any engagement this council chooses to see moving forward. And first, one that has worked very well here and elsewhere, and certainly has been part of the discussion with staff, with engagement, is to really slow down to speed up to talk about why it's needed and why this is really a best practice when it comes down to long-term sustainability for infrastructure, natural assets and climate adaptation. Second is to explain a bit of the process and how we got here, including phase one, phase two, where we're at. Thinking about shaping the fee, so being able to just bring that provisional basis forward, something that, what do they call it, spaghetti that sticks on a wall, something for people to kind of hold and talk about, it's something a bit more real rather than just speculative or theoretical, bringing that basis for discussion. And then being also being able to have some time to talk about shared benefits, the transparency, the equity, and the environmental care, how folks who have a user fee can shape some of the costs related to their property if they're willing to go about making some of their own onsite investments and otherwise. So it's the the combination of both internal technical work and some public engagement that allows us to really come home. And I just wanted to point out that the the parcel tax part itself is more straightforward. The the user fee basis is, it could be where you would spend a little more time on the public engagement side of things. It's more considered, it has more steps to it. It's still manageable, but it it's one where folks might want to take a bit more time to unpack and understand how it affects them. Next slide. Well, I think this is the last slide for me, but I just wanted to maybe prime it before it heads back to to Trevor. It's just to say that as a team, we've kind of come to this point that we we feel quite good about a proposed model and some of the desired next steps, but are looking forward to some of the discussion here today to talk about the level of support for a two-part design, including a a parcel tax for capital and a user fee for O and M, again, without alignment with water and sewer, very much guiding us through this. Any considerations towards engagement, the level of, the timing of, and some of the key parts that matter there? And then just recognizing that being November, that it's a good time to be thinking about collaborative resourcing and budget needs that might be there for for 2026 or beyond. And maybe I'll just hand it back to Trevor on that front to say that it's been great to get to this point and very keen to have the conversation with you about this.
Thanks, Aaron. So I appreciate the summary. I couldn't have done it anywhere near that good myself. I will say that so we we've, through the through the process of this, I think the the key standouts were the really apparent lack of dedicated funding for the capital. And that's just for a strict asset replacement. We have about $34 million worth of assets out there that we don't currently have any dedicated means of replacing as needed, right? So we're not necessarily talking about adding new assets or some of the strategic projects that we've been able to get grant funding for, like the pond, a white tower, or the creek restoration, but just the kilometers of storm main, manholes, catch basins that we have that will deteriorate and fail. We don't have a a method of proactively replacing those before they fail. And that's the 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 real, I think, I would say, concern from our perspective and I think shared by finance is not having that. We're in a real vulnerable state right now. And I naively thought I might have some time between council and the committee meeting, so I've got notes on my desk across the parking lot. But I do know that we've kind of on an, using an age-based metric, we've got about 12% of our assets within the stormwater system that are, would be considered in poor condition. And those, well, they haven't quite yet, they will be failing. And without having some funds to replace them before it gets to failure, we will see culverts that have bottomed out will eventually collapse and driveways could collapse. It could also be road crossings and that would, we'd get to see some potential road collapse or we'd have big potholes and very expensive repair rather than having to, being able to proactively just get in there and replace the culvert before it fails. So that's where we've landed with the recommendations where we're suggesting that for year one, which as per recommended in the report, starting this year, or sorry, 2026, that we would recommend that we impose the parcel tax to start generating some capital revenue so that we can build a reserve, so that we've got some funds for that asset renewal and asset replacement. And then recognizing the relative complexity in the frontage recalculation and that there is a lot more room for engagement with the public on kind of the fee and and council certainly, on the fee structure, how we're distributing the costs that are borne by single-family residential, high-density residential or commercial industrial. And then as well as what sorts of provisions we're willing to entertain in terms of potential like reductions in the in the rate that someone might be able to get through planting a certain number of trees on their property, which will improve absorption of rainwater, which will reduce the dependency on the drainage system. So there's a few considerations that private, individual property owners might be able to take on, which we could consider to reduce the rate. So we're proposing that that decision, I'll wait until 2027 or a future date so that we've got time to do the public engagement next year to kind of make sure that we have a really good rate structure that's defensible and that reflects the priorities that council kind of gives us as we enter into that engagement. So I think there's there's two recommendations. One is to, is that we we start with the parcel tax in 2026 and then that we do public engagement throughout 2026 for a decision on frontage fee at a future date. And with that, I'll look to questions and discussion from council.
Thank you. And that was, yeah, was the report was well done. Thanks a lot. Very informative, very concise. So I have a couple of questions. I guess just to kind of dumb it all down, it's like the the parcel tax is is, so what we're doing is we're running all our sewer out of general right now, basically, general and grants, right? So the parcel, so we're going to create maybe a separate, we'll be able to track all the expenditures and the capital costs and then compare them against, like we're creating a different revenue source for the town just for sewer, right? So we'll start with the parcel tax and then you go from there and decide, okay, like, you know, and before your your cost, when you come to, you still come to council and say, hey, listen, we got to replace this main. It's going to come out of this fund or that fund, and and the funds can go up and down. Like you're going to have, are you going to have a sewer like reserve or something that we can see on the financial statements and and drainage?
Yeah, thank you to the to the deputy mayor, yeah, just maybe just for clarity. So we're kind of using drainage to refer to the stormwater system. Sewer is a bit ambiguous. Sewer can generally be anything underground piping. So sanitary is the wastewater, drainage we're considering using for stormwater just to create a little bit of clarity between the two.
And it'll be separate, like it'll have its own.
Exactly. They'd be separate, separate funds. And the capital that we would raise through the parcel tax would go into a capital reserve for drainage that we would then, as part of the budget process, pull from to fund capital projects like replacing culverts or replacing a storm main. Which right now, those funds, the only source that we would have is through general taxation revenue.
Okay, that so far makes, so the financing model, like this, and then I'll ask council, do they have any questions? Like frontage, so if you're going to use frontage prospectively, is that is that kind of, I can understand why you'd use frontage in like, like major cities and stuff like that because the lot sizes are probably all so close. But I mean, you can see in our zoning bylaws, some lots are are giant, and then the frontage, they're long, narrow lots. But I just wondered if there's any any kind of question of using maybe lot sizes in gross, I don't know.
Certainly, that was a consideration. We did, we discussed this. Aaron may have some thoughts he could share as well through work with other municipalities. I think where we landed with this is we think that the linear meter, so the frontage length, is a better representation of the infrastructure that's required to service the property rather than a lot size, which could be interpreted as a a rain tax in a way. And a lot of the large properties might be largely undeveloped. And so a lot of the runoff that's hitting it is primarily comes from roofs, driveways where you've got hardened surface. So there's not necessarily a direct correlation between the size of the lot and how much of it is hardened, like paved or roofs. And so the linear being the amount of like street frontage and the amount of ditch length that you have or or underground pipe, we thought was a really good proxy. And I think Aaron kind of nailed it. It's it's really visual. People can look out there and say, okay, from here to here is my lot and I'm paying for this portion of whatever's in front of my property, rather than the whole acre that somebody might have in the back that's just trees. Yeah, so that was the the thought process there.
I appreciate that. Counsel, does, do you have a question? Counselor Thompson?
Thank you. I wanted to continue along that, because that was my question too, about lot frontage. What about the properties that are, sit on a big corner? Or or are on two, have two streets, a front and a back street? How does that factor into that? Because that seems like that would be a big consideration.
Up to you, Trevor. Just jumping on it here. Okay, sure. Great question through the chair, both, both of you. I want to put it out there that it's very common for there to be minimums and maximums for some of these. You could say, you know, eight eight meters is the minimum frontage that everybody is going to be contributing and the maximum is 30. And you can make those minimums and maximums per land use or per property type designation. So it's very common to kind of give it some bookends and say, everybody's within within this. And it creates a bit more of an even playing field. Second, when it comes to corners, and corners are important, it's typically you would take the longest of the two, but not add them up. So that's just a way to kind of work around some of the the corner aspects. Some municipalities have looked at different sort of intensity rates depending on the road that they front, which can also be a consideration too. And I think part of what what staff are referring to is you can kind of go to engagement to find out how well this sticks in some of those considerations that become quite resonant with with staff or with the public. Where are the areas where there needs to be quite a bit of customization? And where would it not be that useful because it really isn't becoming a sore point or a really important point to other folks? So there's lots of provisions that you can include about if if someone has gone to extreme extents about trying to make their site very pro rainwater sustainability, you can offer different discounts and rebates. And the opposite, you know, can be true too. Surcharges that can be used to incentivize folks to change the way that they've they've developed the site. So there's actually quite a bit of nuance and quite a bit of detail depending on the degree of this council and the public really wants to see this be shaped.
Follow-up?
I imagine that's fairly staff-intensive. Is it just formulating all those calculations and and doing that feedback analysis like you mentioned?
Through the chair, it's it it's difficult to administer over time if you include a lot of those things, to test them out by calculating them through an analysis phase before you put them in motion. That's not that unreasonable to do. So what we typically do is bring a base model, like the one you see in the report. And then we start to include sort of some impacts that might come from the top five or six most popular provisions that you would include. Then you have a bit of a box on the side that says, what else? And you allow folks to kind of pick a few different ideas that might be there. And then you you do some analysis after that engagement to come back and say, here's the base that we brought. base that we brought, here's the five or six things that are most common and have the most staying power in other communities, we tested those, here's the impact. There's a couple other, you know, things that were identified by other folks, but it wouldn't apply to a lot of properties, and we've kind of kept it out of the mix for now. So, yeah, just to explain it, bring the base, have the discussion, check out those potential provisions that appear to be quite useful to your land and property base. A few of them need to go to the parking lot, or kind of stay to the side for future engagement, if it ever gets there, but it becomes quite manageable to do through the design of the fee. But your point is well taken. If you've got fifteen different nuances to your design rate, that creates extraordinary administrative burden for the long term. Without naming other municipalities, several of them have had to, several of them have had to staff up unexpectedly, where most of the money has gone to sort of explaining and doing the analysis, rather than funding the core work as staff have sort of laid out. See, you have to really look at diminishing returns when it comes to this, and a few simple ones is much better than a whole lot of complex ones, because you're trying to appease all insights and questions. Hope that helps you.
Counselor DeAndrini?
Thank you. Yeah, I have the same question, but then I thought, with regards to the corner, but I thought, well, frontage is where your address is. So I thought, okay, that's easy. One thing that I was thinking about incentives, it's permable parking. And I know as we densify, I think that would be a great thing to incentivize people, or even to, then they would even put in front of your house, maybe it's not even the parking stall, but there's a phase that, maybe at the beginning, it's a little bit of work, but once you see and measure, then it's kind of the property, nobody's going to take the permable parking, which is a little bit expensive, I believe, but it might be worth it down the line to have the, okay, I'll do a permable parking, but in ten years I'll pay off, because I have my taxes, so I think that's a good, thank you.
Counselor Crowe?
Thank you, Mayor. Really appreciate this report. And, you know, we had a workshop, I'm thinking, was it back in the spring, or even last year, where we were looking at some of the costs that are looming, that the community's going to be faced with, and our current taxation, and, you know, DCCs were discussed at the time. So this certainly fits into what we have to get ahead of, because, as the Director of Infrastructure pointed out, we certainly can't afford a disaster, because disasters really do tend to be expensive. I'm certainly willing, I'm a little confused, because in the recommendation, it says that the new drainage parcel tax be established in twenty twenty-six at the rate of one hundred and fifty, and applied to all parcels of land, and that a review panel be established. But then, ahead of that is, what sort of popped out to me was option three. So I'm just looking for clarification. Is it, we may move the recommendation and an option, or is it just? And I have a follow-up after that.
Sure. Through the chair, option three is what's recommended, so I realize that could have been made more clear in the report. So in the, if you read through the options, we discuss option one, and why it's not recommended, option two, why it's not recommended, option three, why it's not recommended. So the recommendations that's provided at the end of the report reflects option three, but that wasn't made explicit, so I appreciate that feedback.
Thank you for that clarification. I would certainly move the recommendation that's just been brought forward. And the other question that I would have is, I would suspect that if we're creating this ostensibly a utility to look after potential floodwater, drain it, or floodwater, I guess, rainwater management, stormwater management, this potentially could impact on homeowners' insurance, I would think, that, because the town is being proactive to a certain level, that, because right now, I know I'm paying insane amounts on my insurance for overland flooding. So I'm suspecting that, because we're being proactive, that it might impact on residents' insurance, to the point of people are going to say, I don't want my taxes to go up, but if my home insurance potentially could be coming down, is this a trading point?
You're going to say you've never heard of anyone's insurance ever going down?
Through the chair, I do know that insurance will go down if fire protection levels improve, so that your fire protection level, part of your insurance. I don't know what metrics the insurance providers, I'm sure lots of them have different tools that they use to calculate the overland flooding risk. I honestly have no idea whether us establishing a utility and showing that the town has a robust funding model, and would have an impact on properties drainage, or that insurance level, so I can't really comment on that.
Follow-up? Counselor Crowe?
Thank you, Mayor. In the report, it was mentioned that planting additional trees on a property could help mitigate some of this stormwater management. There are federal grant programs that provide trees to communities. Would the town be in a position to acquire trees, to make them available to homeowners, as opposed to people having to go running off to the nursery to buy indigenous trees?
Through the chair, the Urban Forest Implementation Plan is the next item on the agenda. So it's a great segue, counselor.
What if it gets voted down? Thank you. Aaron, what would you like to say?
Through the chair, I realize I wasn't asked a question. I just wanted to mention that a very common part of a subsequent phase is to look at the list of available, what we call best management practices, or BMPs, and there is quite a long list. Some of them include tree planting, some of them include rain gardens, there's different infiltration swales, permeable paving. The point that I'm eloquently trying to make is that there's a long list, and what becomes quite helpful is for a municipality to say, these are the ones that have the best bang for buck for us, because it can get a quite unwieldy list, lots to administer, lots to go out and inspect, but really, I think what you want to do is probably put out a handful of signals, these are the things that we think will benefit us most, and try to incentivize those. The payback isn't usually to the point where they look at the math of their own utility rate and say, well, this pays for itself in three years. Occasionally. Most of the time, it's people who want to do the right thing to improve water quality, water quantity, this is just a little more incentive to make that happen, and get a bit more money back in their pocket. So there's, it's rarely a business case method. It's figure out what the long list is, pick the ones that work really well for here, put them on a list, and get some folks to sort of self-identify and say, I've done them, feel free to come by any time, and then that's when some of those discounts can sort of come into place. And that would be a part of a subsequent bit of work, is just pick those.
Is that good? You want to know how many trees you need to plant on your property to get the parcel tax removed?
I've got lots of trees, thank you. But I did move the recommendation.
Okay. Seconded. Counselor Thompson? All in favor? Passes. Thank you so much. Again. Okay, move on to four point two. Natural Asset Technician Urban Forest Implementation Plan. Take it away. That's all yours.
I'll make this brief, because I know we're getting late. I just wanted to highlight, it's in the report, but the Urban Forest Plan itself was brought to council for consideration in June of this year, and council had the recommendation, or the resolution to prepare an implementation plan for the recommendations outlined in the Urban Forest Plan. In the Urban Forest Plan itself, there were recommended actions and tables associated with that, and I just wanted to highlight through the staff report, some additional columns that were added in the implementation plan to align with council's strategic plan, and also to provide clarity on resources needed and responsible departments. So some of the columns added, I'll just go over briefly, were things like resources and financial impact. We defined resources for each action as either core service, which is kind of great, because we just spoke about that in the stormwater utility, and then core service and grants, and then new, which would be capital budget and/or additional staff resources needed. Financial impacts were categorized by either time reallocation for staff, otherwise up to, like, requiring estimates or over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the last thing I just wanted to point out was that, that I don't have my glasses, that, where is it? Oh, my gosh. Oh, yes, that we emphasized that while making, that many of the actions can be undertaken as core services under current work plans, but to fully implement the plan, dedicated staff resources would be needed that currently don't exist within the organization. And with that, I will turn it over to council, or to committee for questions.
Thank you so much. Questions? Counselor Crowe?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really, you know, I think this is something that we desperately need to get moving forward. The one question I have is, is there a way that we can help facilitate people in an effort to fire smart while supporting, you know, this program? Because right now, I'm seeing people panic, fire smart mode, cutting down trees left, right, and center, and, you know, we don't know what their intent, if there is an intent to replace them with more appropriate vegetation. So what I would be looking for is, and it didn't jump out at me in here, is if there's a way we can help people embrace firesmoting while transitioning to more environmentally sustainable vegetation that will align itself with the intent of this program. Does that make sense?
Through the chair, yes, it does make sense, and that's something that's come up throughout urban forestry with other municipalities, that there's this, there's a bit of a disconnect between the two. And I think that, that as far as educating the public on fire smart practices, that would be undertaken with the Fire Smart Coordinator and that program within the Sunshine Coast. And then I think for the town, our role would be potentially updating the Tree Preservation Bylaw, which is one of the recommended actions in here, to allow fire smart assessments to be considered as a risk assessment, to go alongside with applications for removals, because currently, the bylaw itself just has tree risk assessments from arborist reports. And so it's a good question, because it is, a lot of communities are facing this.
Counselor DeAndrini?
Thank you through your chair. So exploratory question. I wonder if there's a little, a way of enforcing dangerous trees in private property? Because, I mean, I was lucky enough to have a tributary my neighbor, and that was in town land, so the town dealt, but I know cases of people that have dangerous trees, but don't care, because don't live here, and the neighbor may pay the price, and sometimes the trees are too big. And I even know a case of a neighbor that took, and have to pay thousands of dollars to, you know, just to prevent some catastrophe. So I know it's, it's, how to say, a gray zone, but I wonder if there's anything in this regard that there's a possibility of exploring? Because the more, there's a lot of trees that, this in particular was a cottonwood, that is notorious for breaking branches. So sometimes you have good neighbors, and you even can come up, but my neighbor, my other neighbor as well, got twice hit, like, one year and another year, so.
Director of Infrastructure Services?
Thanks. Through the chair, that's, it's a civic responsibility, so really, it's a private property owner's responsibility. I think there's limited means that we would have to enforce that, but that's certainly something that we can explore as part of our legal engagement when we update the bylaw. We can pose that question, is there anything that we could consider, including in the bylaw, that could give the town some means of enforcement? I wouldn't be skeptical that we could, but it's certainly a question we can pose and worth asking.
Yeah, I think the, like, really important part of this is, like, our, like, the bylaw itself, like, and updating it, and ensuring that people, you know, I mean, I made a complaint to these guys, because the, I'm sure the guy's trying to sell his property on North Fletcher, and he just went in there and cut the trees down to improve the view. So we've got trees in the town, like, I mean, that report that came through, I mean, you could barely see any homes on the front picture, because of all the trees, right? So there are trees here, so it'd be really important to preserve the trees, like, emphasis on that, that's better than just simply saying, well, we have to plant more trees. But anyway, Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, you spoke to where my mind was going to with the zoning bylaw, or the, for this, I imagine is going to be a really complex undertaking. Can you sort of speak to your approach? Yeah, thanks for the question. Through the chair, we worked, the project team for the Urban Forest Plan itself, we worked with the planning department, we had an internal team across departments, and that was a consideration. One of the planners, she provided input on, as she was working through the draft zoning bylaw, so she provided input to the planning department on things that we were recommending in the Urban Forest Plan, and to look at alignment. So there was a lot of discussion about lot coverage and permeable surfaces, and, but that is, again, like, fire smart, it's finding a balance between both of those things. And hopefully, like, yes, I worked with Kirsten Rockins on this, and we hope that it was reflected within the OCP and the zoning bylaw, the recommendations from the Urban Forest Plan.
Okay, Counselor Crowe, do you have another question?
No, I was going to move the recommendation.
Oh, you're moving that the Urban Forest Implementation Plan be endorsed?
I am.
Okay. And second, I did have one more question, because I know you've already pointed out that, like, costs and so on and so forth like this have not been determined yet, but, I mean, we're implementing the plan, it doesn't mean, like, full speed ahead, start hiring tree planters. I guess you'll obviously come back with a schedule of implementation, and what it might cost, and so on and so forth, or a budget for the year, or the next year's budget, I guess, I would assume that that's going to happen, that's the next step?
Yes, so the process that we were working through, starting with the One Water Strategy, looking at, you know, we got the report, and then we built an implementation plan, and then from that, there's recommended actions, and then after council endorsed it, we would take those actions and create project briefs, and develop project budgets to bring to council for budget considerations. So that's what we were planning to do with this one as well. Outlined in the report, there are actions, there's ten, that, or sorry, there were a few that are already underway, under current budgets, but yeah, we will bring forward budget considerations for the rest of the actions as they come available.
Thanks. Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's good. Thank you so much. Thanks for sticking around. Okay, next meeting. Regular committee of the whole meeting, to be held on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-sixth, at one P M. Motion to adjourn? Seconded by Counselor DeAndrini. All in favor? All right. I will, I guess we'll come back at, do you want to say five o'clock? For the, we'll come back at five o'clock to finish our special committee meeting, special council meeting?